Is very specific by statute and then our plans for the funds are also very specific. And so, so the types of expenditures coming from the referendum fund will be much narrower than they are currently for the, the operational referendum fund.
Thank you. Lynn?
So, will the monthly financial report include the safety referendum separately?
Yes.
At the meeting like this?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? No. Thank you Roger as always. Next we report is the student data report. Filling in for Dr. Dudley is Ms. Ramona Rice. I guess first of all, I'd like to thank you for sticking with us till the hour that we're at. And personally, I'm looking forward to the report. I just think Avid is a great program and looking forward to hear what you have to tell us.
Well, good. Thank you. Dr. Beresford, Mr. McMichael, and members of the board, I'm very happy to be here tonight to provide a student data report for the Carmel Avid program. And I wanted to just begin tonight by pointing out the mission alignment between Avid and Carmel Clay Schools. And there are three main places of overlap that are particularly worth mentioning as the Avid system helps to both further define and operationalize the mission of Carmel Clay Schools. First, we want to support all students and Avid does this with an intention to increase the quality of both teaching and learning, closing gaps in student achievement so that all students are prepared to realize their future potential in college and career. Now, Avid does this with a strategic focus on four key domains. The first one is professional learning to provide high-quality instruction. The second is district-wide systems to promote academic preparedness for all students, leadership development for both students and staff, and building a culture of success. I want to highlight just a few of the ways that Carmel Avid is doing these things and increasing in those four domains. First of all, at each of our sites, there's a focus on the use of WICHER strategies. This is writing, inquiry, collaboration, organization, and reading, beyond just the Avid elective class and into content area classes. So, WICHER strategies support rigorous instruction because they embed engagement into teaching and learning. And it's not possible to have rigorous academic courses without engagement. Rigor happens when the teacher uses inquiry-based collaborative strategies that intentionally engage students in the content and then bring results in increasingly complex levels of understanding among our students. The school improvement plans for each of our middle schools includes increasing the Avid strategy schoolwide to support all students towards academic success. And the Avid Action Plan uses a distributed leadership structure to support professional learning communities, our PLCs, our subject grade level, and academic teams where they will learn and practice Avid strategies and then take those strategies back to their content area classrooms and implement them. Another focus of the Avid system is creating a culture that honors and supports all students towards their individual success. A huge part of this is simply providing students with what Avid calls opportunity knowledge so that they just know what all the career paths are that are in front of them. For the past two years, we've taken all of our eighth-grade Avid students to the junior achievement Job Spark down at the fairgrounds where they're introduced to eight different career clusters and they have an opportunity to interact with volunteers who work in all those different industries. And it's always fun to come back to the school and debrief with the students and hear them say things like, "I didn't even know that was a job." You know, it really opens up their eyes to all the possibilities. So, who are these Carmel Avid students? Our average students range in what we call the academic middle. They have a 2.5 to a 3.5 GPA. They've demonstrated academic potential because they've done well on their standardized tests. They have good attendance. They desire to do well and they have a willingness to work very hard. And with the support provided by the Avid elective class, these are students who do very well in rigorous academic courses and they are poised for great success beyond high school. We currently have 7% of our students in grades seven through 12 enrolled in the Avid elective. And you can see the individual breakdown of our schools there on the slide that you have in front of you. We've officially began our recruitment season this month and so we will be communicating with parents and teachers and students to make sure that we actively enlist students that we think would most benefit from the Avid elective. We are now in our fourth year of offering Avid at our middle schools and the enrollments in the elective class at the middle schools have continued to increase. We have seen a slight decline in our enrollments overall at the high school. And this is something that we wondered about and actually anticipated prior to implementing our middle school program. We'll continue to analyze the data to better understand the trend and we'll make adjustments as necessary moving forward to be sure that we're continuing to meet the needs of all of those students. So, a few highlights. As I mentioned, our middle school enrollments continue to increase which is definitely encouraging. It's also worth noting that 25% of our middle school teachers have had some sort of Avid training. Also, we have a third of our Avid students enrolled in a Level One language and nearly a quarter of them are now taking Algebra One, which as you know, both of those are high school level courses and students receive high school credit for taking them. So, this indicates that our middle school Avid students are capable of doing well in rigorous courses. At the high school this year, 36% of all of our course enrollments are in what we would consider rigorous academic courses, which includes AP, IB, the Dual Credit, Project Lead the Way. Also worth highlighting is that the average AP score of our Avid students last year was a four. So, not only are students taking those high-level courses, but they're doing well on the year-end national tests. So, this is a very good indicator of the success of our program. Our district Avid goals this year are based on the improvement plans at each of our secondary sites. We will continue to provide professional learning that helps to expand Avid implementation schoolwide in order to support all of our students' academic success. We will keep refining our recruitment process so that we actively enlist the students who will most benefit from the Avid elective. And we will continue developing teacher capacity to meet the social and emotional needs of students so that all students in every classroom can achieve their full potential. I thank you very much and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have about Avid.
Thank you. Do we have any questions? Katie?
Is there any particular reason why Clay has lower participation or is it just?
You know, we're looking at, we're looking into that. It probably has to do with some with the, just the personalities of the kids in the buildings, maybe the way that it was presented in certain buildings. But, there's an intentionality around finding the right kids to be in that Avid elective because there is a certain kid who does very well in there. So, I don't have a clear answer on why some schools have higher numbers than others.
Well, I will have an incoming seventh grader who doesn't have much choice because it's such a great program, so. Yeah, one.
Wonderful.
Leila?
Thank you for bringing all this information and, and like Mike, I am a huge proponent of Avid. I really was, didn't realize we had the program until I joined board and have been delighted from day one. I noticed on, I think it was Twitter, Sherry Great from Westfield, the superintendent of Westfield, had had a post that she was here in Carmel visiting to explore the Avid program.
Yes.
I was surprised that most of our Hamilton County schools do not have the Avid program at the high school level.
They do not. We are actually currently the only school in Hamilton County who has Avid.
Wow. Question.
Yeah.
The percentage of students in the middle school or even at the high school level, percentage of students who are recruited because they've been identified by a counselor or a teacher as compared to those who, the parents or the student willfully are exploring the program? Do you have an idea of how many fall into which category?
The difference between who's recommended and who volunteers or who wants to join?
Right.
I don't. I don't actually know the difference. I haven't dug into the data that deeply.
So, do we typically actively recruit or we identify students and then have a conversation with the parent or how does that work?
We do some reaching out to students that we believe that would benefit so, and that comes from teacher recommendations and counselor recommendations inside the building. So, if they have a student that they really feel will meet the profile, whose needs aren't being met in some other way, they might reach out to those families of those students to invite them to participate. Otherwise, our recruitment is just kind of public recruitment through announcements and we did send out an email blast, some Twitter things, and we'll have some things on social media that will help us with our recruitment.
Pam?
Since we are now offering it in the middle school, do you think that has anything to do with the reason why some students don't want to take it or continue to take it at the high school because they've already had access to the class?
Mm-hmm. Yes. I think we've been doing some exit interviews in order to better understand why those students are not continuing on. Our juniors this year are the students who would have been able to have been seventh graders and started Avid. So, we'll really see that, we're looking this year to see what that trend is going to look like with our juniors. But, a lot of the reason that students exit is because they simply feel like the program has met its goals for them, that they've learned the things that they needed to learn. Sometimes they want to take other courses as seniors and so they want to have that space in their, in their schedule for other electives. So, there's lots of reasons actually. We can't necessarily attribute it right now to our middle school program.
Katie?
Well, I just wanted to kind of piggyback on what you were asking, Leila. In my own experience, in sixth grade, like, I know that Clay offers a class called Skills for Success, which is a very similar and like a pathway to Avid. And so, I know that that is a big component to kids who were involved and interested in that to be able to access, to be able to go forward with Avid.
Well, and piggybacking that, having a successful Avid High School graduate, I mean, and going back to being the only school in Hamilton County that offers it, I think that comes from is, Avid was initially designed to help first-time college, first-time college students, families. If you had not had anybody in your family going to college, and I know that the perception of Carmel High School is that that's a smaller group, but for my daughter, it was more getting organized, getting her to go on college visits with the class and just kind of helping her get organized. So, but questions that I do have, I know for the high school, you had to apply for it and be accepted and then commit to taking it all four years. Is that, in the middle school, is that a similar type program?
Yes. They do apply in seventh grade and once they are in seventh grade, then they can continue in eighth grade. They don't have to reapply for eighth grade. It's just an assumption that they'll be in at the following year. We do currently have our students apply again to join the high school program because we pick up a lot of students through that recruitment process actually. More students who have heard about it from the middle school program now and realize that they do want that support as they move into high school.
Okay. Thank you. And as I, it is a big commitment and you do in high school give up four electives in order to take it. And I know they all dread the first year, taking notes and carrying the books, but I know by the second and third year, they're thankful to have those skills. And then, the junior and senior years are really doing, applying to colleges and applying for scholarships. And so, I'm dreading for my son to have to do that on his own when my daughter had help doing that. So, there's my personal plug for Avid. Any other questions? No, well, thank you for a very informative report. Next, we move to board member reports. First, we have Carmel Redevelopment Commission, Mrs. Bowden.
Thank you. As the board of members, in January of this year, I was recommended, excuse me, to our Carmel Mayor to be appointed to the Carmel Redevelopment Commission on a two-year term. In the state of Indiana, school board representatives serve as non-voting members on this commission. Redevelopment Commissions have the authority to propose an actif, which is tax increment districts upon approval of the city council, which captures tax revenue for projects that will hopefully enhance local economic development. And this economic development then acts as a catalyst to jumpstart neighborhood and community growth and ultimately, we hope to lower taxes based on the higher property values. As we know, that schools are one of the most important drivers of economic growth in a community and their ability to maintain educational excellence in a growing economic environment is very critical. And if you ask many of the people who live here why they moved to Carmel, they will probably tell you it was for the schools. I am a non-voting member, but I do find it very beneficial to our district to be able to serve and speak on behalf of our district on matters that could affect our schools. And I will continue if any of those things come up to be sure to pass that along to all of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for Katie? No? Thank you. I know from serving on it, it's a very great partnership we have with the city and we talk about TIF a lot and the pros and cons to the district and we appreciate the relationship we have with the mayor and the commission and their executive director. Next report is, on the agenda is Carmel Clay Parks Department. Lynn, do you have a report?
Yes. So, Carmel Clay Parks and Recreation has started the master plan for the next five years and the park system has overall a master plan and each park has its own master plan. So, for the West Park, to get inputs on the master plan for the West Park, the ESE students at College Elementary and West Clay Elementary will be invited to give, will be invited to join a focus group to give their inputs. So, I really appreciate the relationship, the collaboration between Parks and our school district.
Thank you for the report. And again, yes, we really appreciate the relationship we have with Carmel, Carmel Parks and that they're an integral part of our Carmel Clay School family. Next on the agenda is superintendent's report, Dr. Beresford.
Thank you very much. Still haven't quite got over the, the Avid stats that over 50% of kids take an IB or, you know, take those exams, AP exam. That is, that just shows that that skill building that goes on there is something that carries on and just amazing. So, well, well done. Thank you for sharing that, Ramona. Just a couple of things. Yeah, I know it's been mentioned before, but just one more time, the referendum. General election will be next Tuesday, November the 5th. Polls open at 6:00 a.m., close at 6:00 p.m. And our school safety referendum will be on page one of the ballot. We are number one question. We're proposing a referendum for no more than five cents for $100 of assessed valuation and that would generate a maximum amount of $5 million a year. And if passed, it's going to provide the following. We will place at least one highly-trained school resource officer, a Carmel police officer in every school in the district, which isn't the current reality. We'll provide additional mental health programming for students in every school across the district, which is not our, our current reality. We'll provide professional development and train our students, staff, and even the community and anything we can do to improve school safety and reduce violence. So, if there's any other questions, you know, about factual information about this referendum, it's on our website. If you go to our district website and click on About, it will open up a window and hit School Safety Referendum and there's a lot of information there including a tax calculator if anyone wants to get a very close number on what it would cost. But, in general, for a $125,000 house, it's going to be about $65. $350,000, it'll be about $100 a year. So, just want to encourage everybody to get out there and vote. Also, I want to share with you that the district held the Parent School Safety Academy on October 23rd and 24th and Mr. Woodward and DJ Chef, our SRO supervisor, did another stellar job and another class has graduated from the School Safety Academy. I know we have some graduates here on the board. And just think that's a great program to give parents just a little peek behind the curtain. We don't give away all the safety programming, but it is good. And Mr. Woodward's goal of having a highly-trained student body, a highly-trained staff, and a highly-trained parents and highly-trained community, he's taken the steps necessary to lead that charge and proud of his efforts there. I wanted to know, tell you that I was at the, this year I did not run, but I did help start the Ghost and Goblins, 2K, 5K on Saturday. And it was, started out just a little bit of sprinkles and it was not what I'd call a, a, a big-time rain at the start and we were able to get started and the kids and families were just adorable. And of course, the Prairie Trace King was, Here We Glow Again and that was their theme and they were glowing. They had fluorescent outfits on and glow rings and, and if you saw the picture of, of the principal and assistant principal at Prairie Trace, that's something we need to keep forever because, you know, that's, that was an amazing outfits that they were wearing. Also, there's some really, really great, there was one family that were all dressed as Mario characters and so it was like a running, you know, game. They were, you know, on the run there doing it and every character in the family was a different Mario, Mario outfit. So, it was just really another great, great experience and, and even though it was raining, a lot of, a lot of brave people went out. I think it was maybe raining a little harder on the one that came back in, but, you know, spirits were still pretty high regardless of the weather. And I did want to point out that that was, you know, Stephanie McDonald and Barb Danquist that are retired as the directors of the, the foundation. And so, this was the last, you know, the last prep for Ghost and Goblins, which is something they started a while back. And so, it was really kind of good to celebrate, you know, those two. And I said to Barb that it looked like her shoulders were a little bit higher after that was over with, like the weight of the world was off of them or something. So, but we want to celebrate, you know, the contribution they've made to so many teachers and students in our district for so long. So, and the CEF Board's just great and great, great, just doing great things. So, that was fun, the Ghost and Goblins. Also, you probably saw on social media and around that the Carmel Fire Department has recently partnered with nationally-known Casey Program to educate young students on, on fire safety. And I know several of you attended some of those at some of the elementary schools. So, Casey and, and I can't remember the other dog's name. What is it? And Cali. Casey and Cali are the Fire Dogs and they teach kids about fire safety. So, and it's gone to a lot of different elementary schools, going to head, I think maybe all of them. But Casey, they provide fun and engaging ways to like stop, drop, and roll. So, the dog actually does stop, drop, and roll. And so, the dogs actually show kids how to, you know, how to, how to do different things that can keep them safe in a fire. And a retired firefighter, Jeff Owens, who was an IFD fireman and then he retired and then he worked for Wayne Township, he now wears a Carmel Fire Department uniform and he presents Casey at elementary schools all over. And so, the stats on it, he educates 400,000 students each year on fire safety. And it's, the program's credited in saving 22 lives. So, it's a really important thing. And just recently, is this morning, we had a fire that affected one of our students and, and his mother. And so, they're in stable condition after the fire this morning. And then, one of our staff members had a house fire on Friday. So, the training these kids are getting is not, it's, it's real and it really is something that can save a life. So, we're happy that our district and, and our city and is, is working with Casey and the Fire Dogs and really getting that word, that word out. I was, I attended the first one at Prairie Trace and, you know, with the dogs and the music and the rhymes, they have a way of educating our kids that it sticks. So, it's a good program. Hamilton County Kids Coat Drive was a big success. Carmel Clay Schools collected 1,400 winter coats, 1,400. 400 lightweight jackets, over 350 winter accessories. And there are still volunteer opportunities at six different locations on November the 2nd, which families can come and pick out winter coats. So, we'll be posting that information in our board recap, but they're, I'm looking for volunteers to help with the distribution of those 1,400 coats and stuff and other things. I did go to the Orchard Park Elementary Annual International Festival. So, I got to admit, I'm thinking elementary school international festival, you know, I'll, I'll roll in there. I, it was, I had to park a mile away. The place was absolutely jam-packed and there was 21 countries featured and they had food and music and traditions. A lot of the families hosted the booths, you know, all the different countries. I'd kind of take a walk around the world in the halls of Orchard Park. And then, the kids did performances, all kinds of different performances at each grade level. And I still don't understand how music teachers can do that. They can take like 60 kids and clap their hands and they all get in line and, and then they do the dance or the song and it's just, it was just really a special night. So, kudos to Orchard Park and the International Fair. And then, I wanted to congratulate Carmel High School student and I'm hopefully not going to tear her name up too bad, but Sapna and her last name is Keshatri, I think. And she received the prestigious state recognition as one of the recipients of the 2019 Indiana Outstanding High School Students of Spanish Award. And that's by the Indiana Chapter of American Association of Teachers of Spanish. And so, and she also identified her teacher Gretchen Bishop as the inspiring teacher that inspired her to have that strong passion for Spanish. So, that's a pretty big deal. So, congratulations to Sapna. And then, we'll go on to our sports reporting because it was a wild weekend for, for the Greyhounds in particular because the, start off, congratulations to the girls soccer team. They're headed for the state for the second year of Ohio State Championship. They defeated Castle 1 to 0. And then Noblesville also won. So, it's a Hamilton County showdown of Noblesville versus the Hounds at Fisher's High School. So, it's even going to be held here in the county. So, you know, that'll be the, for the state championship and if the Hounds can pull it off, it'd be two state championships in a row. All the teams at both, both locations said it was the worst conditions they'd ever played a soccer game in. It was driving rain, 30 mile an hour winds and if you were playing against the wind, it didn't matter how hard you kicked it, it wasn't going anywhere because the ball's getting blown back at them. So, so kudos, kudos to those girls for having the grit to get that done. I attended the semi-state for Boys and Girls Cross Country in Shelbyville and it was wet and it was cold. The boys' race started in a heavy rain and ended in a heavy rain. The girls' race started in heavier rain and ended in heavier than that rain. It was, I think I posted that it was a gully rusher and I put that it was a noun and it, the definition is a heavy fall of rain. And the wind picked up and those girls were just gritty. And so, the boys won the semi-state, girls came in second. And, and the state meet's coming up this Saturday, so good luck to, to those boys and girls cross-country runners. And I still will stay on record that cross-country is the greatest sport in the world. So, the other ones are okay, but cross-country's number one. JV cheerleading squad, we're named JV State Champs. So, congratulations to our JV State Champs. And our varsity stunt group were runners-up in their division. So, we had a good weekend of cheer competitions. But, I had to come to the bell ringer and I'm going with sports again, I'm sorry, but the, our boys', boys' tennis team, our number one singles player, which is Presley, he defended his, his state individual state championship this weekend. So, last week, they won as a team. So, that's kind of like step one. They won the, the team championship and that was their fourth in a row. So, it was a four-peat. And then, so this time, it's, it's a, it's a competition with all the top players in the state in doubles and in singles. And we had Hounds on both courts. And of course, it was raining, so it was moved indoor and I was really happy about that because I wasn't quite dry by the time I got there. But, those guys are just amazing. I mean, they both brought home state titles. So, so we call that the Triple Crown in tennis. So, they won the state championship and then won the individual singles title and won the doubles title. But, these kids, one of them, Uday, we saw him, he was today, he was here with the National Merit semifinalists. And he and his partner and, and Presley were just, just amazing, amazing people. Jones McNamara is the, is the, who plays with Uday as the doubles guys. It's kind of like they just know where each other are going to be all the time. It's just amazing the syncopation they have and, and they just make incredible shots and Presley too. So, just couldn't be prouder of those guys. They're just in a different class and couldn't be prouder of them. But, they won the Triple Crown. And so, congratulations to those guys. Well done. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Dr. Beresford, for a very informative report. Well, thank you, Dr. Beresford, for a very informative report, as always. The last item on the agenda before adjournment is upcoming meetings. One more time, November 5th, Election Day, and there actually are a few more things on the ballot than school safety referendum, so get out for and exercise your right to vote. November 11th is our next school board workshop session. November 25th is our school board regular session, followed shortly thereafter by Thanksgiving break, which, for those of us that work in the schools, the rest of us don't, get the 27th, 28th, and 29th off for Thanksgiving break. And then, December 16th will be our school board regular session meeting. I will now take a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Thank you. Second. Thank you. The meeting is adjourned at 9:27.